On twelve, on North Monterey Street on May eighteenth, at Doyle Park on April twenty-seventh, at sixteen oh nine Greenbrook Court on April twentieth, and at forty-three twenty-one Boulevard Park South on May fifth.
Second.
And proper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes. One minute, uh, Madam Clerk. I believe we have some employees of the month for the parking red.
Yeah.
First of all, good morning to the administration, to the ladies and gentlemen of the city council, and to all the citizens here this morning. Uh, this is long time overdue. It is my honor to introduce Ms. Miranda Secor. I like to call her Miss Nike because she just do it. She don't make no excuses. She just get it done. Uh, she's like an Energizer Bunny. If you ever seen her work in event, you know, this is a person you don't mind signing her, her time card because you know she earn every dollar. When you see her work, she works from the time she comes on site to the day is over. She always looking for something extra to do. She's an epitome of what you want an employee to be. Uh, she always goes above and beyond. She greets everybody with a smile and always has a great attitude. A lot of times she'll go over under overlooked because she don't speak a lot. She just works. She just work. So a lot of times, like I said, that's why it's overdue because she don't make, you know, she don't ring her own bell. And like my dad always told me, when you great, other people, other people will tell your story. So that's why I'm here to tell her story. Um, she assists with all the events. She actually worked with the Mardi Gras team. You know, a lot of people thought they say she's so small, can't she keep up? She worked a lot of those guys doing Mardi Gras. She worked them up under the table. She just, I mean, she just a hard worker. And last but not least, she also helps out with a lot of tennis event with Mr. Scott Novak. So she's all over the place. So because her services always needed. So without further ado, I'd like to award the employee of the month for public works to Ms. Miranda Secor.
Well, I don't, I don't have much to say. So like I said, I supported my department, the city, and my supervisor. So therefore, I can say I dedicated my time on doing my, my best on my work and that's it.
Congratulations to you.
I believe that we have some seniors in the, in order this morning or? Y'all from the?
Harmon.
Harmon Recreation Center? Okay then. Good to see y'all. And then the one that's in the middle is my girlfriend. She been molesting me ever since I was a child, so. Yeah, okay. All right, Madam Clerk.
Public hearings. Today is the public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend chapter, chapter sixty-four, article five, section five of the Unified Development Code.
Uh, this open up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If so, you may come down to the podium by stating your name. Again, let's open up the public hearing for this particular said item. If not, this public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to rezone property located at forty-six hundred Cypress Business Park Drive from B three and B five to B three.
This open up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to consider the application of Sonia Jordan to operate a shuttle service.
This open up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Turk Schlessinger.
Good morning, President Small and, and City Council and Chief of Staff Barber. Nice to see you guys this morning. Um, we're here with Alta Point this morning. Um, and we really just wanted to come by and, and give some periodic updates on some of the special things that are going on with our organization. And, and today, and I think you, you remember back about a year and a half ago or so, we opened up a new crisis center, um, for Mobile and the surrounding areas. And we just wanted to give you a little bit of an update. And I think, um, Dr. Cindy Gibson is going to be here, here to help us with those updates. But before we do so, you know, the updates are going to be very interesting. But I really did want to use this opportunity to continue to educate the council and, and the mayor's staff, um, and the public that are watching about what this crisis center is. Uh, so many days go where I get a phone call or somebody who've been in a mental health crisis, either their family members or themselves. And they said, you know, I'm in this mental health crisis and I just, I didn't know where to go. I didn't know, you know, where, you know, where I could just go and get immediate care. And that's what this was put in place for. It was put in place for our citizens to be able to go, you know, like these new freestanding emergency departments that, that are popping up everywhere. The crisis center is like a freestanding emergency department for psychiatry, for mental health and substance use problems. It is a, it's, it is just like, uh, an emergency room for that. So I wanted to give you that update and let everybody know that, that it's open twenty-four seven. You can walk in. We have psychiatrists around the clock who are there to, to treat you and to help stabilize you and get you right back on your feet. Um, and now I'm going to turn the podium over to Dr. Gibson to give you a little bit of an update on our crisis statistics that we've got. Um, over the last little while, I think we've had over thirty-six hundred patients who've come through the crisis center so far.
Hey Turk, before you turn it over, uh, where, where is the lo- the location of the crisis center?
It, it is right at the corner of Stanton Road and Gordon Smith Drive. It's over just, it's right by University Hospital.
Good morning, Dr. Cindy Gibson for Alta Point. Uh, thank you for allowing us to be here today. And, uh, it is a privilege to have the crisis center here in Mobile. And as Turk said, we've served over thirty-six hundred individuals since we've opened. Those are thirty-six hundred people who voluntarily sought treatment. And the purpose of the crisis center is to provide that place that's been missing for someone to go when they're in a psychiatric or substance use crisis. Sixty percent of the people we serve have a substance use disorder or co-occurring substance use and mental health disorder. And we're able to help get them back out on the street and into their home um, with the support they need, uh, getting treatment rapidly. And, um, the, the crisis center has been a diversion from our emergency departments, uh, from law and, or from arrests. Uh, over one thousand people have been brought by law enforcement officers instead of being, uh, arrested. And, uh, that is a huge difference in our community. And, um, it has helped increase our collaboration with Mobile PD in particular and law enforcement in general. Uh, but we are doing a lot of really neat things and progressive things with law enforcement that is part of that crisis continuum of care. And, uh, the savings to our community ha- have been exponential, over thirty-five million dollars since we've been open in diversions to emergency rooms, uh, the jail, psychiatric hospitals, the probate process, and, uh, ambulance transports and such. So, um, the crisis center is available twenty-four seven for anyone in need. And like Turk said, it's in the Tolmanville community. And, uh, we are really, um, pleased with the outcome and with the support the community has given us and the support that the council has given us. Yes, uh, we have had so much, uh, substance use disorder issues that we are opening a sec- uh, second.
Council, uh, is okay for the keep going. Good, keep going.
Thank you. Uh, we're, we're opening a second unit that is dedicated to substance use only. Uh, it's a six-bed detox facility. Uh, there is no place in our region where someone can detox without, uh, worry of cost to themselves. And, um, seventy percent of the people we serve are uninsured and have no way to pay. Uh, the detox facility allows us to use our psych beds for psychiatric stabilization, uh, which has been an issue. Uh, the substance use tends to crowd that out. But that will be opening this month and, uh, provide an alternative for, uh, the, the high rate of substance abuse we've seen particularly since COVID.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Reynolds.
Where will that substance abuse, uh, detox facility be located?
It's in the crisis center.
Oh, okay.
Mr. President.
Vice President. Dan, Mr. Carroll. And Dan, I think it was Mr. Dave. Okay, Mr. Carroll.
Appreciate you coming down today and sharing this news with us. On the, on the crisis center, is that strictly a walk-in? Or I've noticed a lot of these are saying diversion. So are people going to the hospital and then being sent to the crisis center? Or how is that working?
Sometimes. Preferably, they are coming in themselves. Family brings them. Uh, if law enforcement gets involved, they will bring them. Uh, and sometimes we get them after they've been to the ER. We're working with, uh, um, the city of Mobile's EMS department right now for direct transport to the crisis center. But our, our goal is, you know, to get them where they can get immediate treatment. You go to an emergency department and if it has six psych patients in it, you're not going to get the care you need if you're having a heart attack. And so, uh, and the psych patients are not getting the care they need because they don't staff with psychiatrists. So we want to get people to the right place when they need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
About a year and a half ago or so, we had some continuing conversations about mental health and people on the actual street. Uh, there was a program that was being implemented with the Mobile Police Department. Uh, I'd like to know what type of successes or failures we've been having with that program.
Absolutely. That is, uh, one of, one of my proudest things. And Commander Graves, uh, I always say he's my partner in crime. Uh, uh, he can speak to that as well. We work, uh, closely together in a collaboration, uh, with Alta Point's clinicians and, uh, Mobile PD's officers where we have, uh, offered them training. We have stepped that up to include virtual reality training. We can recreate any scenario that has happened here in Mobile and let officers go through that scenario and change the, the course of the outcome and learn from their mistakes or, uh, learn new tactics. Uh, de-escalation skills, particularly for dealing with individuals with mental illness, substance use disorder, uh, neurocognitive disorder, intellectual disabilities and such. And then we also co-respond with law enforcement. Uh, I go out with the SWAT team occasionally. Uh, we respond anytime there's a mental health call that the officer requests us on scene. We're on the same radio dispatches as law enforcement. And our latest venture, we have iPads in officers' cars where they can connect directly to a clinician to do an evaluation with the, uh, individual in the field. And we can get them the help they need. Sometimes those folks are completely unknown to us. Um, we have thirty iPads right now and are continuing to roll those out through a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance.
Are, are there any noted successes where we've de-escalated the situation where the consequence or the outcome could have been totally different?
Absolutely. I think one of the, uh, most memorable successes has been an instance where we were out with SWAT. And, um, we arrived on scene shortly after they did and were able to give them some background information that helped them make a decision that saved a life. And there are numerous instances of, of saving someone from going to jail uh, and getting them into treatment, uh, when they need it. Uh, and those are certainly, you know, helpful diversions for both the county and the city.
Yeah, on the life, I would be interested to know what that date was when that actually happened. You don't have to tell me who or what. I'm interested on a date.
Okay, I can tell you.
Yeah.
Not off the top of my head, but I.
Just if you would, just, uh, I just want to, uh, use it as a benchmark before, after.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I want to thank y'all for coming down. Thank you for your service. Um, I had an opportunity. I actually started work at hand when a situation when I was working with a young person and we had a call and, and the team came out and assisted, um, in that situation. So I definitely seen the service that was provided and, um, it was a great service. So thank you so much. Um, I had a question with the, um, detox. Um, now, how, if a person wanted to be a part of that program, how does that work?
Um, well, they can walk right in.
They can walk right in. If they, if a family member wanted to, they have to agree to be a part, of course, right?
Correct.
Okay, so is it a number that, um, they can get in contact? And if they wanted, you know, more information?
Absolutely. Our access to care number is four five zero twenty-two eleven, and that's staffed twenty-four seven. And they can provide any information and guidance. And our crisis team, uh, often goes out and tries to convince people who are struggling with the decision to come on in and get the help they need.
Okay. Now, do you all provide, um, like maybe like a, like talking about, like, I guess, a, like a seminar? Like if, if, if the community want to bring and do a session?
Yes, that's something that Commander Graves and I have talked about with the virtual reality and equipment is setting up, uh, uh, times when community members can come in and use that equipment and see what it's like to, um, de-escalate someone in a mental health crisis and, and what that looks like from the law enforcement perspective as well as what it looks like from the perspective of the individual in crisis.
I would love to be a part and.
We would love to have you.
And set that up with some community engagement, um, in our community.
That would be excellent.
If we can do some dates, I would love to set something like that up soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, uh, Madam Assistant City Clerk. Um, as I began these matters, I am reminded of a quote from, uh, George Orwell. Those who control the past, and I'm paraphrasing, control.
Could you give your name, please?
Control the future. Those who control the present, control the past. Greetings to, uh, everyone, citizens of Mobile. Reggie Hill is my name. Um, I was today to address those matters that were left off the agenda last week. Um, I believe that the entire UDC needs to be revisited. Uh, as I mentioned last week during the public hearing portion. Um, however, I want to take this time to warn the public at large on what is up the pipeline as it pertains to zoning and community development. Uh, if you live in areas closest to the water downtown, uh, near Brookly Field or in neighborhoods that have been most underserved for decades, uh, your property is in threat of being seized slowly and strategically. Or our reported leaders have led us to believe that working to reshape this geographical makeup of the city is not something intentional. Um, in an assertive effort to debunk the twenty-twenty census. Stay tuned for additional information. We all know a hundred and eighty seconds. Um, there's definitely nowhere near enough time to address these serious matters of Mobile, Alabama. Um, as I began to speak about this public safety, I'm reminded of a quote from Carl Jung who said, "That which you need most will be found where you last want to look." I know a lot of people, uh, do not necessarily want me to come down here and address many of these matters. But if you look over the years, most of the stuff that the individuals of this body, uh, end up speaking on, um, is from what was here at this podium. I may never get credit for it, but most of the stuff that's laid over, held over, since it committed, dismissed or vacationed may be. Because I'm not seeking the credits for the people, but it's coming from this individual. And a lot of them won't respond to it in the midst of this meeting because they don't want to give that credit. But it doesn't matter if we're moving forward for the public. As August announcements approach, I want to remind the people that, uh, after ten years of one administrative approach, we are nowhere near being the safest city in Alabama, let alone in this country. Um, also keep in mind how in the same timeframe, we have wasted over forty million dollars combating public safety. Yet this is the most unsafe Mobileans have felt, uh, since I know I've been alive. Um, God bless T Prime, who's the face of most of the negative instances of the same. While the citizens have no idea he is having to acknowledge the directives of poor supervision. Um, like before, we'll have to continue this later again, as I said, uh, for time's sake. Um, I'm hoping that someone can grant additional time. We know how that goes too, unless it's in favor of what is going on here. The rules may be made up as we go along. But lastly for now, this civic center, while many of our reported leaders, um, do not want to address this. May I have an additional minute, please?
Uh, does anyone want to grant Mr. Hill an additional minute?
Thank you for being on the floor.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr.
I, I just want to reaffirm the people that live in District Two, uh, down the bay, uh, Church Street East, Oakley, uh, in the campground in Lower MLK, uh, that there is no alarm of your property being seized. Uh, again, I don't want any of you to think that the city is trying to take anything from you that is yours. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like to also state to every resident, um, every citizen in the city of Mobile, um, from my particular seat, I re- uh, I would like for anybody in the city of Mobile to come down and speak. I love for people to come down and talk and share their concerns. Um, and I love giving people credit for what they do. Um, I'm grateful for Mr. Hill for coming down and sharing his concerns, which I might not always agree, but I think is always very vital. Um, and I give him credit. I let him know it's some great ideas that he has given. Um, and when he gives good ideas, I give him credit. If I disagree, then I disagree. People disagree with me all the time. And I think anybody who think they always are correct, that's a problem. I don't, I'm wrong sometimes. I actually admit it. I publicly apologize to people all the time. And if anyone can't do that, that's an issue. Um, for me, um, to make, um, blank list statements, um, to say that your property is in danger is dangerous. One of the things that people always say that is, is nothing happened in my community. So I heard, you know, people say, well, nothing has happened in this particular community. And then when stuff start happening in the community, oh, it's a conspiracy theory taking place. What do you want? Do you want something good to happen or you don't want nothing to happen? I don't understand it. Just because the progress has started taking place, no one is trying to take your community. Now, is it sometimes things people have hidden agendas? Probably so. But just because you see progress doesn't mean that somebody is trying to do something evil. Let's get behind people that are trying to do positive things and work towards that together. And if those people are trying to do things, how you combat that? By creating ownership and pride in your community. That's how we do it. So to put that statement out there is a dangerous statement because everybody is not doing that. We can't use that as an absolute. I don't like absolutes. I always tell people that. Let's be very direct in our approach. But I give credit to everyone who have created and said great ideas. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, a ditto to both of my colleagues. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance is held over. Sixty-four zero two zero, amend the city of Mobile Unified Development Code, chapter sixty-four, article five, section five.
Move to table.
Second. And proper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item table.
Sixty-four zero two five, consider an ordinance to amend article thirteen, section sixty-four dash thirteen dash two of the Unified Development Code.
Move to table. And proper move.
It needs to be held over until May fourteenth.
Hold, I thought we were. Hold, maybe hold, hold, hold on and break it to the quote. Proper moving second in a discussion, Mr. Dave. I thought.
I, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Woods and, and we met and we've got the, we've got the procedures. We, I believe I talked to you a little bit about this. But we believe on this one, we can hold it over until May fourteenth. We will do the rep publication in the interim. And then on May fourteenth, it will be ready both for public hearing and passage on that date, if we do it that way.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Move to layover until May fourteenth.
Second. Proper moving second in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All, all opposed? Items laid over.
Consent resolution is held over. Forty-one two five, declare the structure at two thirty-seven Abram Street. A public nuisance in order it demolished, secured. Forty-one two six, declare the structure at twenty-nine ten Berkeley Avenue. A public nuisance in order it demolished, secured.
Motion to table.
Second.
Proper moving second in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Items table.
Thirty-seven two ninety-one, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor class one license to LA Tavern.
I moved.
Second.
And proper moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item pass.
Uh, resolution is held over. And if there's no objection, I'll take them all together. Zero eight three zero two, approve purchase order to Arcadis US Incorporated for traffic video detection system equipment. Zero eight three zero five, approve purchase order to SHI International Corporation for annual renewal of various citywide software subscriptions. Twenty-one three zero eight, authorize contract with Protech Video for management of technology training and consulting services. Twenty-one three zero nine, authorize contract with Southern Earth Sciences for groundwater sampling. sampling, explosive gas monitoring and reports for CND Bates landfill and Hickory Street landfill. Sixty-three-ten and three-twelve are authorizing settlement agreements and release of claims.
So moved.
Second.
A proper moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item pass.
Ordinance is being introduced, sixty-four-zero-two-six through sixty-four-zero-two-seven.
Per council rules, these will lay over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, thirty-one-three-thirteen through sixty-three-seventeen.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second.
Proper moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
Thirty-one-three-thirteen, authorize the mayor to apply, accept and receive a grant to the US Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, promoting access to crisis teams, no local match. Thirty-one-three-fourteen, authorize the mayor to apply, accept and receive a grant to the US Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services for fiscal year twenty-four micro grant for underserved populations. Fifty-eight-three-one-five, assess cost for removal of weeds, repeat weed lean groups sixty-nine. Sixty-three-sixteen, approve award a special bonus to the Parks and Recreation Employee of the Month. And sixty-three-seventeen, determine an appropriation to Senior Citizen Services Inc., doing businesses via Health, Fitness and Enrichment Center, serves a public purpose and approved payment.
So moved.
Second.
A proper moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item pass.
Resolution is being introduced, zero-one-three-one-eight through three thirty-seven, three-three-two.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of zero-one-three-eighteen, zero-eight-three-twenty-one, three-twenty-two, three-twenty-three, three-twenty-four, three-twenty-five, three-twenty-six, three-twenty-seven, three-twenty-eight, three-twenty-nine and three-thirty-one, but the rest being laid over for one week per council rules.
Second.
Proper moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clerk?
Zero-one-three-one-eight, authorize agreement with Goodwin Mills K-wood for Dolphin Island Parkway Tiff District Plan.
So moved.
Second.
A proper moving second in the discussion. I would like to thank the administration for bringing this forth. This here is another piece of good news for Dolphin Island Parkway. This here is pretty much is getting a agreement together to put together a plan for the Tiff project along the South DIP area. One thing that the city had failed in the past, you know, with our first Tiff is really, we really didn't, really didn't have a plan going forward and do not want this second Tiff that the city have be the same way as the first Tiff. So we sat down with the administration, we talked and came up with some consultants and we are going to have a community meeting really very, very soon. And it pretty much is to get the citizens together for they can get their inputs and also the city inputs before we can put together a plan. You know, I heard many times throughout my life, without a, you know, a vision, you are perish. So therefore, we're going to put our vision on some paper with a consultant before we can continue to prosper, not only just in the South DIP community, but throughout the City of Mobile, because again, South DIP is the gem, is, is the gem and is going to be a better gem for the City of Mobile. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item pass.
If there's no objection, I'll take them remaining together. Zero-eight-three-twenty-one, approve purchase order to Insight Public Sector for fifty desktop computers for MPD. Zero-eight-three-twenty-two, approve purchase order to Interface Services for replacement flooring for MIT. Zero-eight-three-two-three, approve purchase order to McConnell Automotive Corporation for wreck repairs to Chevrolet Suburban. Zero-eight-three-twenty-four, approve purchase order to MH3 Printing for printing and mailing of postcards for city's recycling program. Zero-eight-three-two-five, approve purchase order to Sansom Equipment Company for replacement of vertical mast for garbage truck. Zero-eight-three-twenty-six, approve purchase order to Shelter Buddy for animal tracking and adoption software for the animal shelter. Zero-eight-three-twenty-seven, approve purchase order to Top-notch Tree Care to remove and trim trees on Spring Hill Avenue. Zero-eight-three-twenty-eight, approve purchase order to TS Wall &amp; Sons for carpeting for Municipal Archives Building. Zero-nine-three-twenty-nine, transfer funds from Capital Project buyer administration projects to Grant Project Port Security Grant Program Fund. Thirty-one-three-three-one, authorize grant agreement with the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources in support of Go Mesa funding, Road, Dog River Acquisition Project.
So moved.
Second.
A proper moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item pass.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one-three-thirty-three, call for public hearing to rezone property located at eleven-hundred Spring Hill Avenue from R-two, B-one and B-three to B-three, scheduled for May fourteenth. Forty-one-three-thirty-four, call for public hearing for the proposed modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at thirty-two-oh-one Airport Boulevard and four-ten and four-fifty Del Air Boulevard, scheduled for May fourteenth. Forty-one-three-thirty-five, call for public hearing to rezone property located at two-fifty-five, two-fifty-seven and two-fifty-nine Dogwood Drive from R-one to B-one, scheduled for May fourteenth. Forty-one-three-thirty-six, call for public hearing to consider a modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at thirty-six-seventy-four and thirty-six-eighty Dolphin Street, scheduled for May fourteenth. Forty-one-three-thirty-seven, call for public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend Article thirteen, Section sixty-four dash thirteen dash two of the Unified Development Code, scheduled for May fourteenth.
So moved.
Second.
A proper moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item pass.
Announcements.
District Five, Councilman Daves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to announce that we will have a District Five community meeting two weeks from today on April twenty-third at six o'clock PM at ER Dixon Elementary School on the corner of University and Bitten Spur. It's two weeks from today, April twenty-third, six o'clock PM, ER Dixon, corner of Bitten Spur and University. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Day. District Six, Councilman Woods.
No announcements.
District Duke Two, Councilman Carroll.
No announcements.
No announcements, Mr. President. District Ford, Councilman Brundles.
No announcements.
District One, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to give a big shout out to Ms. Najah Hill, who's here today. She was recognized by President Biden. He sent her a letter regarding her dedication for her organization. And so I want to just thank you for your service. That's amazing to get that type of recognition. Let's give her a big hand. That's just, that's just awesome. This past week, I had an opportunity to attend two events. I'm not sure if you realize this, but it was fifty-six years since the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King. And so I went to two events to encourage stop the violence in our city. They get, they gave out some awards. We have Pastor Lou that's here that received an award, but our former retired Councilman Richardson spoke at one of those events, but I was able to give out some awards. And so it just encouraged me to see the community rally. CAS gave a amazing event, but to see the community rally and say, look, we need to stop this violence in our community. And so we seeing that our citizens are saying the same thing. So I'm supporting them in any way going forward and let's work together. We're stronger together. I also had the opportunity to have a business meeting with all the business owners in District One. It was amazing event. More information will be coming forward. We want to make sure we're meeting with our business owners. And then we also had an amazing meeting with the crime community, this on, matter of fact, on yesterday. And so we, our next meeting will be with the Midtown community in May. And so I'm excited. We'll be having more meetings coming forward, building our community. Remember, I'm District One, you're District One, we're District One. Let's move forward together. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Penn. District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. This coming Thursday evening, the Mobile Botanical Gardens will celebrate its fiftieth anniversary. And I would like to congratulate everyone who's had a role in this, going back fifty years, all the board members, the volunteers, the staff, and certainly all of the sponsors who make what they do at the gardens possible. So I will be there on Thursday evening, celebrating this big anniversary with them. Speaking of birthdays and anniversaries, on Saturday, the annual Chocolate Festival kicks off its fourteenth event. This, of course, benefits the Penelope House. And like I tell everybody, and you know, it's a tough job, but somebody has to do it and I will be a judge for the Chocolate Festival. So I get to sample both professional and I guess you would call them home baker's goods that they will be entering into a contest. So I look forward to that again. That is Saturday at the grounds.
Thank you, Vice President Gregory. And greetings to the citizens of District Three. I would like to thank all the citizens that had came out on last Tuesday to the North DIP Maysville Community Meeting. Do appreciate the City Clerk office, Ms. Pobonia also, Ashley. Also thank you, Rob Lasky and Keisha Brown for coming out and all the other city employees that also came out on last Tuesday. A lot of great information was shared on last Tuesday and looking forward to making things move in, more in the Maysville North DIP area. Speaking of community meetings, we have a couple of other community meetings that's coming up. As I had spoke earlier, we had talked about the, I talked about the Tiff and we're going to have a community meeting shortly, dealing with the Tiff and also our community center. I will make some announcements on next week, or some dates that we will share with the South DIP area. Again, look forward probably on next Tuesday with those dates. Also, speaking of South DIP, on next Monday, April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four, at eleven-thirty AM, will be the ribbon cutting ceremony for the recycling center. Again, that's going to be the recycling center for the, for District Three, really for the city, really citywide. Very excited about this opportunity that is coming to our neighborhood. Citizens are happy to welcome this recycling center because again, it's going to take place this coming Monday, April fifteenth, at eleven-thirty AM at the New Recycling Center on Dolphin Island Parkway. And to the younger people and older people and whoever we trying to reshape their future on April the twenty-seventh, which is a Saturday, from one-thirty to four o'clock PM at the Sullivan Community Center, the city is sponsoring a Money Move Bootcamp, leveling up your finances. Different topics will be discussed between down payment assistance, credit repair and a whole program. Again, if you're trying to shape up your future or reshape your future, please come out, but you have to register. Please register at, call this number, two-five-one-two-zero-eight-seven-nine-six-seven. Again, two-five-one-two-zero-eight-seven-nine-six-seven to register. Again, this is a free event. Spaces are limited, but if you're trying to shape up your future or reshape your future, please come out to the Money Move Bootcamp on Saturday, April the twenty-seventh, from one-thirty to four o'clock PM. Is anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
A proper moving second in the discussion.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Penn?
I did want to say that in pre-council, I asked the council attorney and I did ask the city attorney, just wanted to just verify, we have received emails, the council or the administration had didn't allow anyone to put any information without seal or logo on it. So the public had asked about that. We didn't give anyone permission. Just wanted to let the public know that. Thank you, Mr. President.
And I believe that you are referencing towards some campaign information for people to actually know what you're talking about, correct? Campaign signs?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All in-